I've got Monica, Marcy, Mike, Sarah. Okay, we're all here. All right, very good. Could I please have a motion to go back to regular session? Okay, Sarah, Monica moves. Mike seconds. One favor. Okay. Okay. First up is the first selectmen's report. I have just a couple of items for that. The first one is that a number of folks have reached out to my office about the status of the Darien train station. And so this is all the platform replacement work that they're doing. That work has been significantly delayed, and there have been a lot of complaints about that. I've managed to get a meeting with the project manager for that project as a Department of Transportation gentleman, and I am seeing him tomorrow afternoon. So we're going to get a full tour of the facility, an explanation of the current scope, what's changed, or what the sources of the delay are. We're going to prepare a video right after that with some explanations, and I will get that disseminated. Maybe not tomorrow, but certainly by Wednesday, so that everybody's kept up to speed on that. So more to come on the Darien Train Station project. On March 18th, I attended a superintendent's conversation at Middlesex Middle School. The purpose of that, which was called for by Dr. Adley, that purpose of it was that there was another racial slur that had been written in one of the bathrooms at the middle school. And the superintendent called that meeting to talk about it, to have a dialogue, to continue the process of pointing these things out and doing all we can as a school system and as a town to really discourage this kind of behavior and to try to engage parents and others involved in a dialogue for that purpose. I spoke briefly at it, and I made two points that I'd like to repeat. The first is that it's interesting that Bill Clinton referred to it in his second inaugural address when he referred to all of this as America's constant curse. And that was almost 30 years ago. And what's interesting is even though we convene in a session like this, it will not be the last one. These types of things will continue to crop up, and it's important for us to realize that it's not just this one session, but these are the types of things we need to be vigilant about and working to suppress and prevent from happening as much as we can. The second thing I brought up is to remember that the folks involved in this in these schools are kids. And as I said in the Bible, they know not what they do. And so I think at some point, we need to educate them as much as possible. But there needs to be some forgiveness in how we do it, because they are in fact just children. So I'd say there were 50 or 60 people there. It was very well attended. The discussion was very productive, and it was sponsored by the Anti-Defamation League. I thought they did a first-rate job in that conversation. And I just want to thank the superintendent personally for having called this. It's an important conversation, and when we have them in the future, and unfortunately we will, I will always be there to be supportive. Last thing I'd said, I've got a note from the folks who are running the swap shop that they are looking for volunteers. So if you are interested in trying to support the many dedicated and talented people who keep the swap shop running, please call my office, and we will get you connected with the right folks. So that's all I got for my first selectman comments. Does anyone have any questions for me? Okay, we'll move on to board liaison reports. Sarah?
So the Thriving Youth Darien Group met last Thursday, on the 20th, unfortunately. I was not able to attend. I don't have the minutes yet, but I wanted to let you know just a quick couple of things. They were, main discussion was about the youth survey, which is coming up, and how that's rolling out, the timeline. And, but their main event coming up is coming up this week. It's Wednesday, 26th. Chris Heron is coming back to the high school. Some of you may remember him has, coming in the past. He's a phenomenal speaker. I remember being in the room several years ago. You could hear a pin drop. Everybody was listening. So I hope the kids are listening and the parents are listening. And that's this Wednesday, the 26th, at 7:00 PM at the Darien High School Auditorium. And I'm hoping to get those minutes, so I'll get more information to you all soon. Secondly, the next Hinley Homes and Royal Building Committee will be this Wednesday. Again, the 26th at 6:00 PM and on Zoom. And so we will have those updates for you soon. Right now, everything seems to be progressing. And if you drive around, you can see, you know, big changes will happening in the next few months.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. Marcy?
Sure. I'm thriving youth, I'm sorry, thriving youth task force, no. Mental Health Task Force has not met since our last meeting, but just a quick reminder that the QPR training is this Thursday from 10 to 11. There are currently 25 people who are registered. Ally says she has room for 30, so she can fit five more. And what that is, again, QPR training is a quick, two-hour training that really helps do a quick assessment on anyone who's having a mental health crisis. And that means anybody having a panic attack, all the way to suicidal ideation. It was incredibly useful. I highly recommend to anyone who hasn't taken it to go ahead and take it. 18 and over, so if you have kids that are home this week for college break, it's a great little resource to have to bring back to school, but it really gives a good foundation on how to help someone who is in a current mental health crisis. So useful for anyone. And again, even just do a simple panic attack, which I think every single one of us has witnessed a family member or a friend or a coworker have that. So it's great to know what to do and how to kind of help someone through those sort of trauma situations. And then we're meeting as a whole task force on April, April 8th, Tuesday, April 8th. We'll meet at Town Hall at 10 o'clock in the morning and go over what our spring calendar will look like. So I'll give you updated at our next meeting.
Okay, thank you. I'm signed up for that training myself and look forward to it. Everybody does a great job with that. So thank you. Mike?
Good evening. The Blight Review Board met on March 12th. The only relevant business, I see we're on the new business agenda at point three, so I will speak about the meeting when it comes up at that part of our meeting.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. And Monica?
The third community engagement, the survey for it closed last night. So Reed Hildebrand is busy putting together all of the responses and creating a future scenarios presentation for us, which will be on Wednesday at 7 o'clock in room 119. We just posted the agenda, and there is a Zoom link on there if you want to participate remotely.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right. Jennifer, are there any public comments or anyone who wishes to make a comment for this meeting?
I have not received any by email.
Okay, terrific. Alexis Sweet is raising her hand. Alexis, you have three minutes, please.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to say a few comments this evening about the governance of Great Island. At the February 26th GIAC meeting, the GIAC narrowly voted five to four to amend dog access rules and refer the decision to the Board of Selectmen, which holds final authority, as you guys know. While this process suggests proper checks and balances, Selectmen Newman stated in the ensuing Board of Selectmen discussion that you had about the issue on March 10th, that the Board of Selectmen's role was to, quote, "support the GIAC," and that she felt uncomfortable, quote, "relitigating GIAC decisions." Her stance implies that the Board of Selectmen is merely rubber-stamping GIAC recommendations rather than evaluating them independently. As you know, the GIAC consists of appointed officials and residents, but they can only serve, elected officials can only serve on advisory committees that don't have functional or operational authority. If the Board of Selectmen simply endorses GIAC recommendations, it's effectively granting the GIAC functional control over the island. I would suggest that the GIAC already enjoys significant influence over the process as they instruct and oversee the consultants, while residents have no direct way of holding the GIAC accountable for their decisions. Taxpayers have committed over $90 million, but we don't really have a say in how it's being managed. So I'm tonight asking that the Board of Selectmen exercise due diligence, especially when GIAC decisions are contested, as seen in the recent five-to-four vote. I urge you to ensure true oversight and accountability in all future discussions about Great Island. That's it.
Thank you, Alexis. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment? Okay. Cheryl Russell, you have three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. I sent Jen an email today regarding your discussion tonight. Now, let me get it back up here. And she just said that she hadn't received anything, so I'm very confused now. Well, anyways, I can't find it. So anyway, I, my point is that tonight you're discussing the Great Island and fines. What I said was, number eight, under the rules and regulations of Great Island, talks about a fine, and it is, you have a sentence in there. If they do not abide by such rules that you're going to look at tonight, then they may be penalized to a town ordinance fine. I don't know what town ordinance that is. I don't know where it is, and I don't have it in any of our information. So that's number one. And also, what I said here is, hold on just one second. Let me just get this up, because I wrote it all out. Sorry. There. Okay. So I said was, it states that the owners are not abid by these rules. They may be penalized to town ordinance. What town ordinance is this referring to? The Park and Rec Commission only has a $49 fine pertaining to dogs that are given out by the police officer and our animal control officer. This fine is only for the parks under the control of the Park and Rec Commission. I am not clear as to what this ordinance is, how much it is, and where it is written. Another note, at the end of the Great Island proposed rules, it states a violation of any of these rules, there may be a fine between $25 and $250. This is also very unclear, and I believe should be spelled out as to a violation equals this amount of a fine. I agree the town, I agree a town ordinance should be written and approved by all parties, but it should be for all our parks. As of now, Great Island will have its own fines, and the other parks will have their fines. This will make it very difficult for our animal control officer and our police officers who give out these fines. So therefore, I would like to see that the Board of Selectmen and the Great Island Committee can come together with some sort of ordinance that would give a fine for all our parks. And therefore, if you're in a violation in Woodland Park for no dog on leash, it's X. It's X at Highland Farms. It's X at Pear Tree. It's X here everywhere. So that was my letter to Jen today. I don't understand why it didn't go through, but anyways, that's my comment for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Okay, any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. Next up is to discuss and take action on proposed revisions to the Darien Harbor ordinances. We have a few folks here in my office who will help us with this. Bear with me one moment. Should we bring those chairs around? Are you guys joining us?
I'm going to, in case you have any questions or need any.
Okay. Is Wayne joining?
I think it's Wayne outside. The room is crowded.
Come on in, Sam. Okay. All right. Appreciate you all coming here. So we have John Keena, who is our harbor master, and he'll start the presentation. We're also joined by the co-heads today of the Advisory Commission on Coastal Waters, so Flip Hubbard and Sam Bridges, as well as Town Council Patty Dog. So what I want to do is just hand it over to you, gentlemen, and let you all take it from here. And let's walk through this material and tell us, tell us which.
So are you just, just sliding, I don't agree.
Excuse me, just for a minute. Would you like me to share your presentation and advance through it as you go through it?
Yes, please. That'd be great. If you have that handy, that'd be great. Thank you, Jennifer.
All right. If you just let me know when to amend slides, that would be helpful.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. My name is John Keena. My full title is the State of Connecticut Harbor Master for the Town of Darien. And that will come up a little bit later in my presentation and how it differentiates between another position. So you could go on to the next slide. Okay. So just a quick cover here. What we'll be covering, what has changed, why do the ordinances need to be updated? We're going to talk about some key recommendations, additional changes, clarifications, next steps, and a couple other topics. Next slide, please. So as I said, I'm harbor master for the Town of Darien. I've had the pleasure of living in this town for over 50 years, and all of those 50-plus years I have spent on the water in Darien. And when my family, my parents moved us here from Norwalk to Darien, Darien Harbor was quite a bit different. My father was able to obtain a mooring in Darien Harbor in 1972 without a waitlist. Likewise, myself in 2008, when I needed a mooring, I was told I might have to wait for a year, but I was lucky and I did not. Moving forward from there, both, both clubs in Darien, Narroton and Darien, both now have established launch services, which also have created more availability in the harbor. Another sort of milestone in Darien's history was COVID. And COVID brought around a tremendous amount of boat, new boaters, new boating activity, because many people weren't traveling and they were opting for purchasing a vessel. And today, boating in Darien is as popular as ever. But one of the things that I see in common as Commodore, excuse me, as harbor master, before that slip, and before not, the appearance of what I call mystery vessels, empty moorings, different vessels on the same mooring during the season, vessels disappearing during the boating season. They may, they may arrive slightly before Memorial Day, disappear for the summer, reappear after Labor Day. And then also moorings being transferred outside the established processes. And also the rumor mill often hearing about moorings being rented. So issues I encountered when I first became harbor master, one of the things, one of the first steps that I took was to help identify who belonged in the harbor and who didn't, was the collection of Connecticut DMV registrations. That really gave me a good idea of who belongs in the harbor and who didn't. That explained part of the equation. The next part of the equation was all of the empty moorings that I saw in Darien Harbor. So when I identified, one subset of the miss, of these empty moorings was people who actually kept their vessels full-time somewhere else. The moorings remained emptied, empty, they were never used. And when I approached, started approaching them, I encountered a lot of pushback. And when I was challenged on a few things, I decided to have a conversation with the Connecticut Attorney General. And the Connecticut Attorney General, I gave him the link to our ordinances online, and he said that our ordinances were not specific enough, did not go deep enough, especially when it comes to utilization. The only thing that we have in our current ordinances that approaches utilization is the fact that a boat has to be in the water on the mooring by June 15th. When I would send out reminders telling people to do that, the boat would appear on June 15th, it would disappear on June 16th, and there wasn't anything I could do about it. Another, another thing that I've also noticed that's not addressed in our current ordinances is the existence or emergence of day harbors. Now, the day harbors may have been used all along, but as far as the permitting of moorings, that is something that's probably been going on for 25 to 30 years. There is no mention of a differentiation in Darien's ordinances between day harbors and birthing harbors. Now, birthing harbor, if you were go down to Pear Tree Point Beach and you looked out into the harbor, you would see all those boats out on moorings. That is defined as a birthing harbor, because that is where you leave your boat at the end of the day. Ziegler's Cove and Scott's Cove are a different animal. They are a harbor where you can go for the day. You've been permitted for a mooring, but there's no expectation for you to keep that boat on that mooring, because if you did, you wouldn't have, be able to get back to land. The only people who could get back to land if they had mooring in those areas were people who have waterfront property. These have become, Ziegler's Cove and Scott's Cove have become very popular boating destinations for both Darien and, and local boaters. As I said, current ordinances make no, do not differentiate between the two types of harbors, but we have managed them differently for quite some time now. And with, now that the Town of Darien has purchased Great Island, it's going to bring even more traffic to, to these areas. Next slide, please. So some key recommendations, changes, clarifications. So birthing versus day harbors. Our proposed ordinances differentiate between the birthing and day harbors. Our current ordinances, because they do not address them separately, it creates some ambiguity. It also creates some conflict. It's like I was saying before, if a boat was supposed to be on a mooring by June 15th in a birthing harbor, that was something that could be expected. But in a, in a day harbor, that's not something that you could hold to. Our ordinances also refer to a practice known as rafting, which is boats coming together, tying up on a mooring or on an anchor. There's no rafting in, in Darien's birthing harbors, but there is rafting. So these, the, the current ordinances contradict these two types of harbors that we have. One thing that's also being recommended is, well, Darien is, is a new slow no-wake zone. All of Darien harbors are slow no-wake areas, but we are recommending a new slow no-wake zone to be established in front of Great Island. This will reduce wave action in that area. This is, these are very, is a very busy area. There's so much activity in Ziegler's Cove now. We often now see boats anchoring out in front of Ziegler's Cove or even out in front of Great Island. In addition to the establishment of this no-wake zone, we'll also, we're also proposing to add two no-wake buoys to be placed, one at the mouth of Ziegler's Cove and one halfway between the mouth of Ziegler's Cove and the mouth of Scott's Cove. Moring tackle standards, the current, or, current, or, current ordinances don't differentiate between the two of them. The, the tackle standards for, for the day harbors need to be updated to reflect the rafting up that has been allowed for many years now in our ordinances. Proposed ordinances reference the need for tackle standards based on the harbor, specific type, the proposed. We really need this to, I actually see more problems with tackle in Ziegler's Cove during the season than I do in all of Darien Harbor. And Darien Harbor has eightfold the number of moorings that Ziegler's Cove does. Here comes the part where I'm differentiated myself as Connecticut Harbor Master and Special Harbor Constable. During the past two years, I've had some conversations about our ordinances, our proposed ordinances with DEEP. And they weren't always as productive as I would have liked. But what it did lead to was the discovery of Special Act 53-597. And this is Connecticut legislation that was passed in 1953. And SA 53-597 gives Darien the ability to manage its own harbors. We had a number of discussions and meetings with the first selectman, harbor consultant, town council, a maritime attorney, and the Advisory Commission on Coastal Waters. And we all confirmed that 597 would be the basis for updating Darien's ordinances, just as they were used to create the ordinances that we have today. And in, in one specific section of 53-597, section four enables the selectman to appoint special constables to enforce these ordinances. The intent of here is that the State of Connecticut Harbor Master for Darien and the Special Harbor Constable to be the same person. But the, the proposed ordinances allows for separation if necessary. Waitlist management. Over the past 15 years or so, the waitlist has grown considerably. There have been a number of people that have stayed on the waitlist for a number of years, and they've been offered moorings a number of times, and they continue to defer or decline. Under the proposed ordinances, this would give the person on the waitlist the opportunity to only defer once. The second deferral would result in the removal of them from the waitlist. Now, not pertaining to the waitlist, but also rights and privileges of what are current permit holders. We've also added a provision to add and to allow a surviving spouse or a state of Connecticut recognized partner to assume the permit should the permit holder pass away. Additionally, another provision is being added to allow the succession of a family member to take the mooring, provided that they are senior enough on the waitlist to be awarded a permit and assume, assume the mooring. This creates a path of succession instead of, sometimes we've seen inheritance of moorings, which is, which is not allowed. Slide number four, our next one. Okay, additional changes, clarifications, rafting up and tackle standards. So rafting up, as I said before, is a practice that happens in our day harbors. Sure, if you go down to Great Island this summer on a, on a beautiful Saturday and take a peek in Ziegler's Cove, you're going to understand what rafting up is. There's going to be a lot of boats in there doing that, just tied up to moorings.
What specifically means multiple boats tied up to one mooring?
Exactly, exactly. So current, current ordinances allow for the raft, rafting of three vessels, but it doesn't go into depth on enforcement or consideration of tackle. The proposed ordinances allow for the rafting of four vessels, but it also allows the harbor master, special harbor constable, and marine police to disperse rafted vessels if necessary. The proposed ordinances will also allow for tackle standards to be updated to better accommodate rafting in day harbors.
I apologize for interrupting. I just use a phrase tackle. Could you just explain what you mean by that?
Sure. Okay, tackle, tackle is, when you go into a harbor, you see a floating buoy. Tackle, tackle, the buoy and the chain and the anchor at the bottom, and possibly what are called bridles, which is or lines that are used to tie to the boat, constitute tackle, which constitutes a mooring. So tackle is sort of the name of the equipment. The mooring is where you're stationed in the harbor. Okay, all right. So rafting of tackle standards. So anyway, I did, I think I finished the tackle standard, penalties. So currently, our ordinances speak to state fines, local fines, possibly even federal, federal fines. The new, the new proposed ordinances include the possibility of lost, loss of your mooring permit if you violate the ordinances. We're adding to the ordinances the waitlist and permit procedures. I get a lot of phone calls. People don't understand what the waitlist and permitting procedures are. So they're being added to the current ordinances. Possible issues with proposed changes. So I feel that probably maybe the loudest people you will hear from are the permit holders that I've mentioned before that have moorings in a birthing harbor and they do not use them. They station their vessels elsewhere, and those will probably be the most objective people about the cancellation of their permit. The other issue that might come up is people may The other issue that might come up is people may take issue with some of the ordinances that have been in existence for years, but now are only becoming aware of them. Next, rollout of the changes. Changes will become effective immediately, but the rollout of them will be dependent on conditions in the harbor and also deep approval of the no wake zone. There's only one paragraph in in the proposed ordinances that DEEP has to approve. The Boating Safety Division has to approve anything in the ordinances with regard to the operation of vessels, and that is the no wake zone. And we have all I have already gone before them. I've asked them for their blessing on the verbiage that's been put in the proposed ordinances. They will only approve the new ordinances once the full RTM approval has come through. And then they have up to 60 days to approve the verbiage about the vessel operation clause. Next steps. I'm told the next steps are Board of Selectmen approval. RTM committees will may need to review the ordinances. Specified in SA 597, it says that a public hearing hearing would be required. And there's also going to be communications that are necessary as far as publication in local newspapers. And I'm told that the Board of Selectmen would be helping us with that.
Absolutely.
Questions?
Yeah, I just further say that this effort's taken quite a while and it's based on a lot of John's experience. But I know Flip and Sam and quite a few other people have had their eyes on this. The Town Council's been involved extensively, not just a little bit. And so there has been a lot of attention paid to this. I think the benefit of all that time and effort is that we really do have something that's going to clarify what at the highest level is the most important thing, which is basically, look, the way moorings work is that you can get a mooring. You have to have your boat on the mooring. It has to be a boat registered to you, the holder of that mooring permit. And if you're not going to use it, then you need to give it up to someone who is on the waitlist. At the very highest level, that's really what we're trying to accomplish. There's some other stuff, but that's probably the most important thing. So I've been through this a lot and I'm very comfortable with the changes that they've made, particularly because our experts have said we've been in the waters for a long time and this is what we think needs to be done. Questions for for everyone? Mike?
So does anything in these regulations affect the ability of a a boat owner to go into one of the harb- one of these areas and just anchor for a few hours or a day or something like that? Not not having anything to do with the moorings?
Provided it doesn't represent a navigational obstruction. No, it wouldn't be. Or i- in the case that if they moored too close to a mord another mord or anchored vessel and there's a chance that they would swing into each other, that that might be that might be an issue.
That that's one of the issues that is the as we distinguish between birthing and day harbors. People don't tend to even want to anchor in the birthing harbors, the main Darien Harbor. They where they want to anchor are in Ziegler's Cove and Scott's Cove, the two birthing. I'm sorry, the two day harbors that were kind of pointing out. And so in there, there's nothing specific here that we change their rules other than common sense.
And my my second question, that'll be it for me. And I fully credit our First Selectmen's, you know, comments. I'm not a member of the boating community. I've read these as closely as I could over the last few days. I just want to make sure that the the people in the boating community have had a full opportunity to be cognizant and read in on these changes and that had an opportunity to be heard because once we send it to the RTM, presumably it won't come back. You know, to us, I don't have any issues with anything that's in here. I I'm just wondering about the the process and maybe, John, you could help me add a little with that.
I've talked to them about that, that every once in a while you run into something that needs to be over communicated and this would be one of those topics. And so I I fully intend to, working directly with them, launch into exactly that effort. And so it's not just publicizing the rules themselves, but a simpler version. So we can go through and say, these are the main things that you need to understand. And we can extend that based on what we're hearing from the public. So if that's not clear, we have newsletters. I can do videos that explain all of this. There are lots of vehicles out there for us to get out these messages in addition, of course, to the required public hearing.
So so we've not obviously broadly communicated these proposed changes because that would, you know, be putting the cart before the horse. But we have had the full Coastal Commission involved and all of our members come from a variety of different boating backgrounds in town. And I think everybody is comfortable with these. I would say 90% of of the changes that we're suggesting here are are just common sense procedural changes that just didn't exist in the in the prior ordinances. And all we're doing is really putting the detail out. There may be one person here, one person there who's going to have a problem with it because it directly impacts them and they think it's unfair. But that most of those are pretty intuitive. And and I don't think should cause any broad pushback from people. You know, there are. You know, I I think that the the most the change probably that might catch the most flack if we ultimately end up changing the morning standards for the day harbors. The people who own the mornings and that may, you know, push back on that. But that's not actually something the ability to make those changes is incorporated in this draft. But we're not actually here by changing anything in terms of the mooring standards in those harbors. But but we really do actually need to change those mooring standards. Just to give you an example of what this issue is, it sounds very abstract. But right now, for instance, there may be somebody who has a mooring in Ziegler's Cove who has a 15-foot sailboat that weighs 500 pounds. And so when you look at the town mooring standards, that would say that's a 250-pound mooring that they should have for that small sailboat. And then you go into Ziegler's Cove on a Saturday afternoon and you've got four 45-foot flying bridge fisher fishermen vessels there that weigh like 100,000 pounds in total. Anchored on that sit tied up to that same morning. And that's the rafting up problem that we run into in in the day harbors. And so that's but we're 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 building in the flexibility to address that in in these ordinances. But we're not actually changing it right now in terms of specifics. We'll circle back with that later.
Yeah, that's a good point. How will that be decided, which you have? Because what this does is that it simply empowers the Harbor Master or the Special Harbor Constable to go in and make those changes. I'm assuming you do that in consultation with the Coast Advisory Commission?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think as a practical matter, we would come back to you all to sort of run our thoughts by you because that I don't know if you guys agree, but that to me is the most kind of politically sensitive of the changes that we could make.
Could require people to buy their tackle.
But it's down the road.
Okay.
Yeah.
The the ordinance state the ordinances state that the the Board of Selectmen approved those those changes.
She would be actors.
So we have to come back to you.
Other questions?
I I have a couple. First, I just want to say thank you. I'm sure this was a humongous project that you all put a lot of time into. And it's one of those things that's been out, you know, we know we knew we needed to take a look at it. So so thank you for all of your work. I want to circle back to the rafting. You know, the on the at the day on the day moorings. And you said, Flip, you just said something which I was wondering about myself, which is is there a standard for this tackle for these moorings to hold four boats? And I'm glad you're going to address that. But you also I I noticed that in the red line version, three boats were mentioned for rafting. And then I see in the final, four boats are approved for rafting. Is that correct?
Ye- yes. You know, we're trying to strike a balance with all of these kind of little rules where the Marine Police might be the parties enforcing the rules. We're trying to strike a balance. We felt that we could actually handle four rather than three. And, you know, the the Marine Police don't like to enforce these rules, period. And so we thought that that was it got you at least big enough so that now it really seemed like you were too many boats.
In my discussions with Marine Police, they were actually happy about the fact that the proposed ordinances included them and gave them the ability to disperse raft ups when necessary. They didn't, there's no mention of that in the current ordinance ordinances. And it's in, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, John.
Okay, so the other thing about the number of the number of vessels on a mooring sometimes aren't always the issue. I mean, there's there's going to be situations where there's three on a mooring, which has always been been okay. But if the proximity of the mooring next to it, it might be a problem with three and three. I've seen, although not they're not supposed to, I've seen moorings with as many as six or more boats on a mooring. And they posed absolutely no danger to navigation in the harbor. They posed a danger to the tackle because the tackle was not spec to that. And that's where the standards, there needs to be separate standards for for Ziegler's Cove.
So the standards for the for the tackle, I understand that and you're going to tackle that. But I would still, you know, Great Island isn't what it was, you know, three years ago, right? And we are looking at only opening up more access. And right now we don't have, you you can come in on a paddleboard or you can come in on a kayak and people are doing that. You can't berth that anywhere, but that's going to change. So from a safety perspective, I really would like us to reconsider keeping it capping it at three boats for a raft up. That that that's one request. And the other is that I saw in Section 7822, you mentioned fines set forth in Appendix D in our town ordinance. And I'm just wondering if it's kind of the same thing that we have with the leash law. We have a leash law that references Appendix D. However, we have no dollar amount attached to that. So that loop was never closed. So in Appendix D, am I just missing it? Or are there fines defined somewhere that I just didn't see?
There are not any fines related to boating in here. There is a general fine for violations of the code, which is $25, not much. But if we were to come up with something that had more teeth, I'm going to hand this over to our counselor so she has some
For 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 most of the infractions, I think our contemplation is that the penalty that would be asserted is not monetary fine, but is the threatened loss of your mooring license.
Right.
That that actually has much more teeth for not for all people. There are people from Long Island who come across on any given day. You're going to have a hard time chasing down a $25 fine with them too. But the I think our, at least in our discussions, contemplation is that that the license to have a mooring is the bigger threat than a monetary fine. But
And that's yeah. And Flip, I'm sure that's the way it is and and for most people. But I would just suggest that if you're going to reference Appendix D, that it it does circle back to something that references boating specifically. And I think Appendix D was last updated in 2006, which is why that $25 doesn't seem like a lot. So while you were doing all of this other heavy lifting, maybe you want to close the loop on that one as well. Those are
We could have the RTM pick that up in their discussions since since they'll be the final approvers of this of these ordinance changes. And maybe they'll introduce as part of that a fine schedule pertaining to moorings and boats and rivers.
I think it would be a matter of just adding that to the general fine description as an additional ordinance that relates to that fine.
As opposed to modifying Appendix D?
Yes, that's how I've seen it in other versions, not in this paper version.
Okay, so you can't have a fine that's not stipulated in Appendix D. So you could modify this regulation or you'd have those fines in the harbor regulations?
Yes, just have a reference.
Okay, all right.
What do you all have a feel for what a satisfactory fine would be? $25 seems like it's
I don't think we need to be medieval about it. 25 to $250. Or it can be levied for every time there's a violation that can be expensive. But I think Flip, you're right that the preponderance of the fear factor is going to be for loss of mooring for Darien residents as opposed to the the fine itself.
Right.
Other questions, Monica?
Those, you know, those people that are rafting up, you know, in Ziegler's, a lot of those people aren't Darien residents, right? So
That's correct.
Right, so again, that goes back to, I hope you'll take a look and consider capping it at three. But, you know, those are the people that maybe the fine will have the, you know, the impact that we're looking for. And I'm sure I'm sure Flip, you know, you I'm sure you can check with Greenwich and whatever for, you know, ideas on what the amount should be. I personally don't have an opinion on that.
Just just to try to on the three to four in terms of the raft up, just to try to get something that everybody can agree on right now. Would would it make sense to make it either three or four and give the Special Harbor Constable the ability to change it in the future as they see is necessary? Would that work for people?
Say that again?
Just said it at either three or four. I don't I don't I don't really care initially, but build in a mechanism that gives the Special Harbor Constable the ability to change that number if they view it's necessary for the management of the day harbors.
Yeah, we're putting something like four and to your point, the Special Harbor Constable can change that SBC spread. Yeah, something like that.
In other instances, in these proposals, given the Harbor Master's discretion to change things.
Yeah, so we wouldn't have to come back and if we if we decided either three was working and we should go to four or vice versa, four wasn't working, we should go to three, then we wouldn't have to amend the ordinances. We'd have a mechanism to have this special
Three to four with the discretion of the Special Harbor Constable.
Yeah, something like that.
Right. Four, you can make the language.
I I would say no more than three.
Well, let's have a discussion, I mean, let's have a discussion about it. And because you guys have thought about this and spent a long time on this. I don't want to I don't want to capriciously just change the work that you're
Yeah, it's doing.
Monica, the reason that I I grew comfortable with the four number instead of the three number is just based on my own experience of going into Ziegler's on any given weekend. And there were many times relatively small boats, 20, 25-foot T-tops were the typical rafting boats. Rarely were they the bigger cruisers. And what I objected to was rafts of five or six boats that would swing into the fairway. But I think it's in if you pick four, and this is what I said to myself, you're more likely to say it's okay for a greater number of rafts without doing anything material from a safety standpoint. If you put the limit of around three, you're just going to find that more violations not get a lot of safety improvement. And and I think we actually have to start enforcing these rules and having either the police or the Special Harbor Constable going and raking up rafts that are greater than X number. And to me, four was a reasonable compromise.
Yeah, I mean, keep in mind, the current limit on raft ups is three. And what we were sort of struggling with is it's not enforced hardly at all until you get to like six or seven boats. And so we were trying to not establish a rule that was just routinely not enforced. I think we all share a high degree of concern about safety in Ziegler's Cove specifically, and that will only get heightened by And that will only get heightened by Great Island as it gets more usage. But to me, the rafting per se is not the thing that causes safety issues. It's when people are swimming and they're on paddleboards. It's people off of their boats in the water. And then obviously, there are people who are drinking driving boats. That is what causes the safety issue, not the raft ups per se.
Well, yeah, I, I hear you on that, Flip. I also, but you know, you do have, when people are rafting up, they usually are hanging out in the water as well. So, well, you know what, I'm just, I'm looking at it from a safety perspective and you said, you know, four forty-five footers on one mooring. So maybe take a look and restrict, you know, the number of feet. I don't know, I don't wanna make this harder for the Marine Police. I just, I see the usage out there increasing tremendously and, and we have an opportunity right now to address it. And so I really appreciate all of your work. You guys are, you're out there on the water, I also am out there on the water, so I've seen what you're talking about. And I'm just.
Well, how would you feel about circling back to where we were just a few minutes ago? The four boats, which at least in the ACCW's perspective was a reasonable compromise versus the ideal and reality, but say, subject to the discretion of the harbor, Special Harbor Constable or the Marine Police. Sometimes three boats might be the right number, sometimes four. But if it's subject, if we acknowledge that someone's actually gotta be talking to these skippers, it's gonna be the voice of authority and it'll be the harbor master or it'll be the Marine Police. And they ultimately have to decide whether or not they're looking at a safe situation for the harbor, for the fairway, for the other boaters.
It, it would be very easy to make that change with the existing amendments by saying in that last sentence, it gives the harbor master, Special Harbor Constable or Marine Police at their discretion. They may disperse rafted vessels for reasons including safety and interference with boats. We can just add, may, may disperse or reduce the maximum number of rafted vessels for reasons including safety and interference with other boats.
Okay.
Okay, all right, I think that works.
Thank you, Monica.
Thanks for that.
My last, my last question was, did you consider any type of noise? Did you look at noise on the water? You, you guys all know how water, how noise on the water travels. Did you consider adding anything like that, any wording in this?
We, we did not actually, I mean, we, we talked about it, but we didn't actually consider proposing any language to restrict it. It just wasn't clear that that was, I think, within our purview.
I, I don't know if it was within my right, but there have been times in the past where there has been very loud music in one of the harbors. And I've asked people to turn it down to respect everybody's, you know, day. And people have done it, but I don't know if, I don't, I don't know if there's boating noise statutes, I don't know. Yeah.
Yeah, it's the music I'm thinking about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I mean, I've asked people, like I said, I've asked people to turn the music down and they've complied.
Maybe we take that approach. Marcy or Sarah, do, either, do you have any questions for the team?
Just a quick question, certainly, thank you very much for putting this together. And I, I also share a concern about Scott's Cove and all the areas around Great Island. I am a boater myself and I have little kids that are constantly jumping in the water and swimming. So safety in that area is definitely a concern as, as it's gonna continue to increase the, the visitation over there. So thank you for putting this ahead. How many moorings are in that kind of Great Island area right now?
Okay, I should have that.
Sorry.
So, Ziegler's Cove, right now, I have twenty-four permitted moorings and I have five that are on what I call approval hold. Those people have either actually moved out of the area or whereabouts unknown. But there's a total of twenty-nine. Scott's Cove, there is a total of fifteen permitted moorings and there are three moorings permits that are on hold for a total of eighteen.
Is there a conversation about increasing that number or that's?
For Scott's Cove or Ziegler's?
Either one.
Ziegler's, I may have to accommodate a Latoral mooring request. A Latoral mooring is a person who owns waterfront property and that would be the people who bought the Ziegler farm. I've already been approached about getting a Latoral mooring there and I've agreed to assist them with that. I would say Ziegler's is full. Without, in, without completely rearranging the, the parking lot, I would say it's full. I don't know if you'd want more in there. It might only be better to rearrange it to create a clear fairway or channel through the center. But I was not intending on adding any more moorings in there. Scott's Cove, there's definitely room for more moorings in there, but the water's much shallower in there. And there's very, very large rock formations and many people are very reluctant to go in there. That's why I have a mooring in there. But yeah, Scott's Cove, you could put more, you could put more in there if you want to, but I would not be in favor of adding more to Ziegler's.
Well, one of the things we've talked about as a group and not decided, there's no consensus on this. You could contemplate, the town could contemplate moving Ziegler's Cove from a private mooring model to a, the town offers moorings as a, as a model. Similar to, for instance, Block Island, if you've ever been up, up there where the town owns the moorings and sometimes rents them out with a day fee. So that's down the road. But that's one, as, just so you have it in your mind, that could change the way the Ziegler Cove mooring structure works.
So it would be first come, first served or you could reserve them through the town?
There's a, yeah, a variety of different ways of doing it.
But the permitting structure for that is quite different. You're now talking about transient moorings and they have to be permitted by state.
Okay, right. But it lets you control, you know, for, talking about rafting up and stuff, it lets you control the mooring specifications more, more tightly.
Flip, if you did that, you would, it would be first come, first served for anybody with a boat, not just Darien residents, right?
It's, it's practically speaking, it's like that right now. I mean, the, the, the mooring, the people who actually own these moorings, I'm not a hundred percent clear why most of them have those mooring permits. Because especially not if we beef up the mooring standards over time, it will be more expensive for them.
Most of the people that I've spoke to and I've approached them and spoken to them about the enhanced tackle standards have been in favor of it. In fact, I, I know of a few people that have actually gone and done it on their own because they're tired of their tackle being dragged around, dragged around the cove. So they voluntarily gone and got larger pyramid moorings to, to stop, to stop that.
But generally speaking, on any given day on the weekend, it's first come, first served. And sometimes the owner of the mooring will show up and kick people off and reclaim their mooring. But other than that, it's first come, first served.
The other question I had is public comment on this. When is that gonna take place? Is it before we are supposed to vote as a board? Is it gonna be before the RTM?
So as, well, as a process matter, to kind of kick off this scrutiny that you're talking about, what I recommend is that we actually vote these regulations out of the Board of Selectmen today. And the vote would be to ask the RTM to take up consideration of these revised harbor rules for the town of Darien. Once that process kicks off, the communication process is something we could attach to it. And it could be not just communication of all this, publishing summaries, doing videos, newsletters, all of that. We can also invite public comment, set up a mailbox or have public comment come to me or to the harbor master or to whomever. Keep in mind that as part of the RTM process, there will also be a public hearing to, for folks to come in and get involved. And then, of course, the RTM itself will have surely more than one committee taking a look at this and that process will take some time. So I think there will be ample opportunity for folks to weigh in and we will just make sure, again, in the spirit of over-communication, that we, we, we really don't leave any stones unturned. If you wanna comment, there will be a chance for you to do that.
We, we could also share these drafts with both Nurotona Club and the Darien Boat Club and ask them to post them to their members or however they wanna distribute them. And that will hit ninety-five percent of the boaters in town.
Yeah, good point. Other questions? So my, my recommendation is that we would vote on these rules subject to a couple of the edits that we've already talked about in this meeting, which Patty has recorded. Are any comments on that, any issue with doing that? Okay, could I get a motion then to approve the revised harbor ordinances and recommend the consideration of those revised ordinances to the RTM as amended in this discussion? Hey, Mike Moes, Sarah Second, all in favor? Okay, you have this. Ready, thank you, we'll start this process.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right.
What's required in that, in that special.
Great, okay, thank you. I appreciate it, thank you, Jerry. Take care, thanks. Okay, next up for new business, discuss oversight for the Nuroton Heights Fire Department retaining wall. Jennifer and I have talked about this at some length in the materials. Thank you, appreciate it. In the materials that were sent around or the minutes from the Board of Selectmen meeting were the concept of a building committee, which former First Selectman Jamie Stevenson thought of, where that concept was discussed. And if you look at the materials that were sent out, what it says in there is that we would want to establish a building committee for anything, any project that would be over a million dollar in total costs. But the actual resolution says that, that the Board of Selectmen of the town shall evaluate any construction project with an estimated cost of a million dollars or greater and determine if a building committee should be appointed to oversee the project. So a million dollar threshold is a, is a guideline, but ultimately, the Board of Selectmen has discretion about whether they would establish a building committee for any, any particular project. So what we kind of wanted to discuss today was just to reaffirm that, that vote that was taken a number of years ago and to specifically discuss the, the wall at the Nuroton Heights Fire Department sort of location. Jennifer, can you add to that?
Yeah, when we were talking about it, we were discussing the differences between the Nuroton Heights wall project and a larger construction project, like the renovation we did at the Public Works Garage or a school project where there's a lot more decisions to be made regarding, you know, just choices and how the design is done. How we, what classroom furniture we might choose. There's, there's a lot more decisions to be made, which we, I think lends itself to a building committee. With the retaining wall, it's a very straightforward project based exactly off of the design that the engineer has looked at. So the oversight role that I see for that is just making sure that financially it stays on track. Making sure that if there are change orders, there's somebody who is reviewing the change orders and approving it other than just the Nuroton Heights Fire Department or their engineer. So I just, I see it as a, while it's still a construction project, I see it as a much smaller, less complicated. And I'm not sure if going through the entire process of forming a building committee, getting volunteers, which can be very difficult to do, I, I don't know if that's necessary for this project.
Yeah, Jennifer and I met about this a couple of times and I, I would agree that the degrees of variability that you could give with this particular project and sources of change orders and all the things that would drive costs in the, for example, the Public Works Building Committee that I was on, or I think any of these other committees, suggests that that is probably not gonna happen with this particular project. Sarah, if you wanna comment, you're sitting on a complex building project right now. Would you be comfortable not having a full committee for something like this? One other comment is I, I kind of wanna reserve those committees for when we really need them and not to burn out our roster of potential volunteers for, for those committees.
Yeah, I, I see both sides of this. I think, I think it's important, look, this is a, an important piece of property and there's a lot that kind of flows down from that wall, there's a lot of impact. I'm concerned about the cost. I, I know that this could be pricey, but at the same time, John, you're absolutely right. And every time we form a building committee, it's difficult, there's a huge time commitment. I don't know if there's a way to do some kind of hybrid where it's members of the fire departments or, I don't know.
We have a suggestion in that regard, which is that Jennifer and I get scheduled regular reports from the construction company and from the department itself. So they have to come and meet to us, meet, meet us, or they've got to come out and show us that project on some scheduled basis so that we're kept apprised. Is that a fair summary of how we would do it, Jennifer?
Yeah.
I think that's fair and I think regular meetings or updates and you're sent, you know, meeting minutes and whatever, maybe they, you're sent the video, however.
Well, what we would do is, what we could do is while this project is going on, we'll just have it as a standing item for every Board of Selectmen meeting. So if we have something to report, we will. But that way, every two weeks, you guys are gonna be updated on what's going on with that project.
Makes sense.
Does that work, Mike?
Yeah, which, which isn't to say if for some unanticipated reason this project decides to go side, go sideways, that we couldn't then create a committee of the future, right?
Yeah, great, great, great suggestion. And I think having that as a standing item on the Board of Selectmen agenda allows us to test that and make sure that if something is going south, that we, we would go out and get additional support or create a committee to try and take, take, take control. Other comments?
No, I could definitely support Board of Selectmen sort of working as a building committee. I just wanna make sure that there is oversight, if there is changes, that this goes, that goes through this board. So that there is definitely oversight and it's not just the, the engineers and the building builders that are, that are working through this, so.
Yeah, so Jennifer and I will be kind of their primary point of contact and so the oversight model, if you will. And then with our regular reports at every Board of Selectmen meeting, if there's something that comes up as a, as a scope change or some kind of potential source of a problem, well, you guys are gonna know about it. And we, when that comes up, then we'll, the five of us will decide what to do if it happens. Sound okay? And Jennifer, do we need a vote to appoint ourselves as the building committee or?
No, I don't think so. I think you fulfilled the role of evaluating it and determining if a building committee is needed.
Okay, that's fair, not, not in this case, but we'll, I think we've got a good alternative model that'll work for us, okay. If no other questions on that, I have a three, discuss and take action on blight foreclosure, Mike.
All right, so as I mentioned earlier, the Blight Review Board met last Wednesday. And of significance is that in addition to reviewing the usual properties on the list, we considered case eighteen dash zero zero four for recommendation to the Board of Selectmen to commence foreclosure procedures. You may recall that the Blight Review Board had done this previously. And the feeling was that in light of the more recent recommendations that we renewed this one so it didn't appear as an outlier in terms of, in terms of time. The fines in this case are approximately two hundred thousand dollars, a little bit over that. And it has been on the list since twenty eighteen. And the Board approved that recommendation in a unanimous. And the Board approved that recommendation in a unanimous 3-2-0 vote.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mike about this recommendation? Okay, I don't have any comments. I know you've done a thorough job of all this, and we appreciate the Blight Review Board's efforts in this regard. If there aren't any other questions for Mike, could I get a motion to approve taking action to proceed with a foreclosure on that case number 18-004? Mike moves, Monica Marcy seconds, all in favor? Okay, unanimous, thank you. Okay, next up, discuss dog leash enforcement strategy. So what we thought to do there is to try and follow up on the Great Island Committee's recommendation with regard to the rule change for dog access, which you'll recall takes place or takes effect on June 1st. And that rule basically says that unless the area is specifically off limits for dogs, the dogs would be permitted to go on leash to all places on Great Island. But what we haven't really discussed is how do we want to enforce that particular rule? And there's been a discussion about going down the route of fines. There's been discussions about, well, if we have fines, then what do we do about other properties in town, particularly parks? And do we have a consistent enforcement approach for parks and other town properties that we would have on Great Island? There's been a further suggestion that maybe what we do is try an encouragement approach to start, and that if we still get significant noncompliance with leash laws or leash rules, that we would maybe take an enforcement approach at that point. But we really haven't sort of declared or decided as a board what we would want to do to try and enhance compliance with leash rules, given the sensitive nature of parts of Great Island, and how to do that. And I kind of wanted to get a discussion going so that we could come to a point of view about the approach that we, we should take with this. Comments, reactions?
Well, John, I know that you mentioned a encouragement campaign. Do you want to explain what that, what you were thinking?
Yeah, I will, I'll give credit for this idea to Jim Palin. But the basic idea would be to encourage leash compliance through a, in a gentle way. So the way we would do this is some combination of Jim and me and anyone else who wants to sign up for this. We would take turns sitting at the entrance of Great Island at the traffic circle and having a campaign to encourage people to keep their dogs on leash. This would include reminders about the rules for Great Island. It'll include maybe some printed material or dog treats or something like that where we could hand out to folks to say, as a reminder, these are our rules, and the rules are in place so that everyone's enjoyment can be maximized for the island, while at the same time protecting both the island and your fellow citizens who are enjoying the island from any undue altercations with dogs. And that's the reason to have them on leash. I think if we have a campaign like that with maybe a little publicity, that people would start to get the message that this is important, and this is Darien, and we're okay with complying with these rules. And so the idea would be, let's try this approach first. It feels much more like Darien to do something like this as opposed to a, an enforcement protocol for leashes that, in a way that we really have not had that sort of thing in Darien. I'd like to try this first. I'll be the first to volunteer to go out and do that. I don't know if I'm going to sit in the rain, but I will sit out there to try and encourage folks on this. And I think what we do also is reserve the right to go down the path of enforcement if there still is significant noncompliance with leash laws or leash rules. I say that because I don't know of anybody who's saying that we need to have dogs on Great Island without leashes. There are very few of any, anybody saying that. I think people recognize that we need to have dogs on leash, and this gives us an opportunity to try to get that message out and see if we can get as many people as possible to comply with that. Mike?
Yeah, I like that approach. I think statutory changes that are, before they're enacted, there is education. I think that usually makes for a better process. Somewhat related in terms of strategy, I know the talk of inconsistencies in some of the rules and some of the parks. And I would want to have some strict scrutiny before we amend or change some of the rules and some of the other parks, which may be working. And by specific example, it's by my observation that in Cherry Lawn, where there are discrete periods where dogs are permitted off-leash, that that, you know, seems to be working, or it's been my observation that it's working. I credit the people who say that such a strategy would not work on Great Island, so I'm very much feeling that we should have leash mandates on Great Island. But in the sake of consistency, I'm not so sure that it's necessary in Cherry Lawn.
Fair point. I was at Parks and Rec in their meeting last week, and I brought this whole topic up with them and actually asked the members to think this through for Parks and Rec, for the parks, properties that they oversee in town, and for us to work together with them so that we could achieve some kind of consistency between the parks and Great Island and other town properties. So you're, you're right to bring that up. I think we're going to end up with some hybrid approaches where some, some parks or some properties have more of an issue than others. But I think the main thing would be to try to encourage people to keep their dogs on leash, which is the rule for the whole town. Other comments? Sarah?
I like, Mike, the way that you had phrased that. I do think that there are some parks that have some very established traditions of timing, you know, particularly Cherry Lawn, I guess, Tilly Pond, Weed Beach. I mean, there was a longstanding conversation to get the wintertime off-leash dog use, and dogs are, and owners are very happy to go use those areas. I would advocate also for an on-leash dog rule for Great Island. I don't know necessarily that Great Island is the reason we're having this, but I do think in other public areas, I think dogs should be on leash. I think walking your dog in neighborhoods, I think your dog should be on leash. I think if you're on a park that has a, a particular off-leash area, I would also advocate in this town for maybe looking at an area where we could do a dog park. You know, there's some very well-run ones in New Canaan, Rawayt, and Stamford and Milwaukee. I think we have Darien residents who belong to some of these, and I think there's a definite desire to have them, and I think we could do well with one. That is going to take some time and effort, but.
Yeah, I agree, and I brought that also up with the Parks and Rec Commission. I actually was up at Wavine Park in New Canaan yesterday and was looking at, specifically at their dog run. And it's not as, it's not huge, but you know, it's an area where dogs can be off-leash, and we just don't have that as a town. And so I think having, having something like that would encourage people to comply with leash rules in other places. So they, I have put that on their.
Give them a place, yeah, give them a place where they could do that, but yeah. Yeah.
Okay, other comments, Monica or Marcy?
Marcy, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. I, I appreciate your thought on trying to educate the public on leash rules in Great, on Great Island. I'm curious, is when you're thinking about starting this campaign, is this going to be previous to our June 1st, you know, changes in the rules? And if we see that people are still containing, continuing to be noncompliant, what is our plan going forward after that? I just don't want to get to a point where we realize that it's, you know, we are educating the public, we're doing everything we can, and people are still not being noncompliant, and we hit June 1st, and now it's a free-for-all, and we have compromised the safety of the wildlife on Great Island. So I, I want a full plan for all of it going forward, right up through the end of the summer. If this doesn't.
Fair, fair point. I think the, there's, I have two responses to it. I'm not quite sure when to start the education part of this, which will be sort of an onsite presence to encourage compliance. Feels a little early at this moment, but I'd want to do it well in advance of June 1st, so call it end of April, 1st of May to start with this process. But I take guidance from others. I further think that it would be helpful to get better eyes on Great Island so that as we go through this encouragement process, that we collect data about noncompliance with leash rules and have a sense for just, well, how significant is noncompliance? And what I'd like to do is start to collect that over time and get some help in trying to record noncompliance. It's actually not that straightforward. You got to watch the tapes and do all that. So we'll work on how to, how to do that. But the idea would be is that let's go through some of this education. I'll start to mention it in town newsletters, and then we'll start the onsite encouragement. And then over, say, a couple of months, let's see how it goes, and we'll try to collect that data and see if we can graph it, right? Or just show trends and say, this is what we're seeing, and this is the general level of compliance that appears to be prevalent on Great Island, and it's a compliance rate of X. And then I would like to bring it back to this board and say, here's what the data show. What would you like to do? And then it may require us going out and talking to people in the community, visiting with the RTM. I don't know. The reason this is tough is that in the past, we haven't really had a fine enforcement mechanism for leash rules. We just haven't done that as a town. And so if we're going to have to go down the path of more aggressive enforcement, if we see a lot of noncompliance, I'd like to have a broader community discussion about that, which is first to ask people, why are you not complying with this? Those rules are in place for a reason. And second, if you simply don't want to comply, then we need to pursue something more aggressive. But I, to your point, Marcy, I don't, I, we'll have a plan for the education and encouragement process. I don't have a plan for what we will do on enforcement. I'd like to gather the data, and let's see what the experience is like, and then bring that back to this board, and based on what we're seeing, come up with a plan. Sarah?
I'm concerned, something you mentioned before, about you willing to go out there, and we have volunteers going out there. John, I don't think the long term, that's a great answer, but I still think that there's going to be a need to inform the public, so I don't know how to address that. I think long term, we're going to need to get some kind of enforcement vehicle in place. I think what we need to do is to reiterate to folks that we're not trying to punish anyone. This is for everyone's health and safety. I am a dog owner myself, have been for years, and dogs, when they're off-leash, do not react well. Sometimes the dogs that are on leash, it's, it's for everyone's safety. And I think we have to figure out how to enforce them. I like the fact that you're thinking about having town halls and a way to get this information out. But I think we need to really have residents understand why we're doing this.
I agree. We'll see, we'll see if we can do an encouragement campaign, collect some data, and then let's react to something when we've got something more concrete. Monica, please.
So I appreciate the, the education and the encouragement. I will say that we have been monitoring just the bridle area. Of course, there are dogs off-leash in other areas, but we have been monitoring that. As of, I don't know, like two days ago, we've had 57 dogs on the bridle trail where they're not, dogs aren't allowed at all. On the bridle trail, we've had 15 dogs off-leash. And in the eagle area, we've had two dogs off-leash. So we do have data that does show that we've been talking about dogs on Great Island. I'm sure everybody is, would like to move on from this topic, but I'm not sure, you know, I think maybe we, we look at a parallel path, right? We look at, we did talk about enforcement. Every, every person on this board mentioned enforcement when we talked about this policy. So we do have a dog leash ordinance. The only thing that we're missing is a dollar amount attached to it. And that, that's not that hard of a, of a fix. So I would suggest we do two things. We do the education, and we look at this ordinance. This ordinance, you just need to get a number on Appendix D that stipulates what the fine is. Chapter 10 has a leash law on it. It just doesn't attach a fine to it. And that will, we could do that without involving the Park and Rec and all of the other parks. And I understand people want consistency, but I also ask why? I think the Cherry Lawn model is working for the people that are at Cherry Lawn, and taking away the off-leash option might not go over so well. So I don't think this has to be, you know, in, in my opinion, just in my opinion, I don't know if we need to take this and make it a town-wide policy. I think we could make this a Highland Park and a Great Island policy, town properties that are not park, under Park and Rec Commission.
I, I agree with Monica, and I have a zero tolerance for bridle trail and off-leash in that eagle area. I mean, I have zero tolerance for it. And I think that that should be the message that we communicate as the Board of Selectmen, that that area is zero tolerance. It is not about education, it's about being respectful, and it's about following the rules of the town.
And it's also federal law, we're going to get in trouble if we don't follow that.
To me, I think that that's an area that we can educate on any of the other areas in Great Island and have tolerance as people start to ramp up. But I think that bridle trail area is a no-tolerant, completely off-limits, and for those that are breaking that, they should be fined.
And Marcy, we have, we have people that walk around the barricades. We have signs up that are very large, impossible to miss, and do state what the fines are, and people still go in there with their dogs.
Why don't, as part of our proceedings tonight, I like Monica's idea of, let's go ahead and get the fine ordinance in place that enables us to impose fines for people who don't comply with leash rules, and let's get that infrastructure in place. We'll start with the encouragement, and if it doesn't work, then we've got the fine ordinance in place that we can start to impose them. And I think if we're, if we, we should, we should include enough teeth in those fines such that if we have to, to go up to a pretty aggressive fine schedule, we have the ability to do that. Particularly in areas that are sensitive, like the eagle area. I mean, there should be a serious fine associated with that. The signs are very clear, and they know better, they're just not doing it. And let's see.
Well, there's a $100,000 federal fine in there, so.
Yeah, that's, that's bad. Monica, I don't recall, but did the Great Island Committee have a recommended fine schedule for this or not? I don't remember.
No.
Okay.
And I'm not sure that, you know, I guess I would ask, is that really under the purview of the Great, of the Great Island Committee?
No, I didn't think so, but I just couldn't recall if there was, if they, the committee had something in mind. If not.
No, they had big numbers in mind, but we did not make an official recommendation.
All right, why don't we ask the RTM to take this up and to come up with a, an addition to Appendix D that enables us to impose these fines for leash violations at some discretion. So in other words, we don't have to, but we have the ability to do it if we decide to, and to launch that process now.
Yeah, I think when we make the recommendation, it should be that they look into it, and hopefully the education committee or the education initiative and the encouragement initiative makes this a moot point. But I, I would make a motion to recommend the RTM pursue adding a dollar amount to the leash law in Appendix D.
Very supportive of that, and could I get a second? Okay, Marcy seconds, all in favor? Okay, unanimous. All right, so we'll make note of that and move forward. But as I said, we'll, I'll try to start on the education and encouragement process with some newsletter comments over the next month or so, and as we get to warmer weather, say at the start of May, to really start with an onsite presence to try and encourage this. So when the broader rule goes into effect June 1st, we start to get some better results. Let's monitor that for a while. In the meantime, the fine ordinance will come together, and those fines will be available to us if, if we need them. Okay. All right, old business, discuss and take action to amend the Great Island rules approved on March 10, 2025. So this is a technical point, Jennifer?
This for dogs effective June 1st, but we didn't have anything that extended the current rules beyond March 31st. So we had a bit of a gap that we have to fill. What you have in your packet, specifically, general rule number eight. What you have in your packet, specifically, um, general rule number eight is a wording that has the current dog access, but notes that, um, prior to June one, twenty twenty-five, they're restricted, uh, to the, the paved pathways. And then mentions that they are, um, not at all permitted on the bridal path or other areas with signs indicating dogs are prohibited. So the way this is worded allows us to make this rule change now and having the June first date in item number eight, we don't have to come back through and change the rules again when that goes into effect, June first.
Yeah, I think this works well. Monica, is this okay with you? So?
Yeah, I think it works well. I just wanna clarify though, that I think by June first, our, um, what we voted to, um, what we agreed on was some sort of an enforcement. And also, just wanna make sure I get this right. Um, areas on the property that will be, um, designated off limits. So that part we'll work on, GAP will work on. Um, but yeah, that, this wording sounds right. You're right. It was like a little gap in there.
Okay. Uh, other questions on these, uh, on these rules? Okay, motion to approve the Great Island access rules, uh, particularly section eight as amended? Okay, Mike moves. Monica seconds, all in favor? Okay, unanimous. Great. Thank you. Okay, transfers. Discuss and take action on a request to transfer ten thousand five hundred dollars to Parks and Rec operating supplies. We have Jen Fava, Director of Parks and Rec, to help us with this transfer. Jen, welcome.
Thank you very much. Um, so as you, I'm sure probably are, are well aware, uh, the Parks and Recreation Commission has been working to try to find, um, some solutions to having more pickleball courts within town. Um, so they've been doing some research. Uh, one of the opportunities that they discovered was, as an alternative, is uh, this system called pickle roll. Uh, and what this is, is it's basically four, four foot by four foot squares that get placed down over paddle tennis courts. So what this does is makes the courts that are typically used in the winter, um, available for pickleball during the summertime. Um, so this is something that, um, the Innis Arden Golf Club down in Greenwich has been using, uh, with very good results. They've actually have two and it's been going so well, they're adding a third. Um, so what the commission voted for at their last meeting was to request, um, ten thousand five hundred dollars. That's for the system to put onto one of the paddle courts at Weed Beach. Um, if we're able to do that, the thought is that this would be a trial, uh, trial basis, see how it works. Um, see if people like it and then we'd be able to make determinations in the future as to what we would want to do. If we would wanna add additional courts or keep it at the one or, or it doesn't work out. But, um, so that is, um, the request. I will say as well that, um, prior to the meeting last week, um, they did do some sort of a, kind of a, a noise test. Um, so that was done with some people playing pickle on one of the courts. Um, and kind of walking around, trying to see what the sound was like. And, um, they said that you really couldn't hear it, you know, from any, any significant difference, distance at all. So, um, they think that this will be a, a, a good solution for us.
Okay, and, and quieter, say, than a regular pickleball court? Is that right?
Um, well, the, the matting, it, the, the surface is a li- a little bit of, um, like a soft matting. So it is a little bit more quiet on that. Obviously, the other noises is from the paddles and the ball. So, um, that would be the same.
Yeah, okay. Okay, when they tested the noise, it was testing it from some distance, say by uh, homes that were around Weed Beach that could hear that? And your test results was, it was hard to hear?
Yes. So, um, I, I, I was not present, but, um, uh, the president of the Homeowners Association, um, Norotan Bay was there, uh, with some commission members. They walked around up Rush Hollow Road over to Norotan Bay. They also looked on the beach. I had said, you know, we need to also make sure the people that would be on the beach would not be, um, adversely affected. So just by going over by, um, the playground and the concession area, they said even right there, they really couldn't, couldn't hear it. Um, the thought would be to set this up on court number six, which is tucked a little bit away, um, with the natural topography. So, um, that was the reason for also choosing that court to try this out.
Uh, questions for Jen? Mike?
Jenna? But I was just gonna add, cause I was actually there when they did the noise test and they did, they walked around the entire property and, uh, to determine whether or not they could hear, uh, the people who were, uh, playing. And this surface is certainly more quiet. I don't know, it's more quiet than the tennis court, but it's certainly more quiet than it would be playing on a traditional paddle court surface. So it certainly deadens the noise on a, uh, on a paddle court. And as Jen pointed out, it's the, it's the one that's most, uh, you know, uh, distant.
Okay. Other questions? Monica?
Jen, I have, I have a couple. So, um, who installs it?
Uh, the park staff would install it.
Okay. And if it doesn't work out, are you able to sell it to someone? Like Innis?
Maybe, perhaps. I mean, I don't see why we wouldn't be able to. It is made to be reusable and seasonal. So, um, you, you just pull it up and, you know, basically all you have to do is power wash the court to get the adhesive off. Um, and again, in speaking with, uh, with the people down there that, um, they've seen no damage at all to their paddle courts. Um, so that's a good thing. But yeah, so you just pick them up and put them back down. So I would think that certainly if we can find somebody that's interested, you could auction it off or, or sell it.
Right. So it's a little more expensive than, um, just redrawing the lines on the court, but I applaud your ingenuity or whoever thought of this. Good, good.
I can't take credit for it.
Okay. Uh, other questions about this? Okay, could I get a motion to approve the request to transfer ten thousand five hundred dollars to the Parks and Rec operating Supplies? We recommend that transfer to the Board of Finance. Okay, Sarah moves. Monica seconds, all in favor? Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next second transfer. Discuss and take action on a request to transfer one hundred thirty thousand dollars to Town Council. Jennifer?
Our town council, our general council budget was budgeted at four hundred thousand and through February, we have expended just under four hundred sixty-four thousand. Um, we have a couple of significant cases that are costing us quite a bit. There's one related to a pedestrian easement that has cost us eighty-eight thousand dollars this year. And we've had about sixty thousand dollars worth of expenses related to tree appeals. So those are two categories that are running a bit hot this year. Uh, what I am requesting is to move one hundred thirty thousand dollars from our regulatory council line over to our general council line. Right now, regulatory council is budgeted, budgeted at two hundred fifty thousand. Through February, they've expended forty-three thousand. The one hundred thirty thousand is unencumbered and not expected to be used. We will need more for general council. There's the expectation that we'll free up some more in regulatory council as we get closer to the end of the year. But if that isn't sufficient, we will need to request a transfer from contingency.
Okay. Uh, any questions on this?
I, I have a question. Jen, so on the tree appeal, the sixty-six thousand, is that the tree appeal for twenty-three A?
That is one of two tree appeal cases.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay, could I get a motion to approve the request to transfer one hundred thirty thousand dollars to Town Council from regulatory and to approve or recommend that approval to the Board of Finance? Okay, Sarah moves. Mike seconds, all in favor? Okay, thank you. All right, um, next up is, we have, uh, Mike Burke is working on the reappearance of Town Council. Mike, care to update us with where we are on that process? And thank you for doing that, by the way. You're on mute.
My pleasure. Uh, briefly, uh, over the course of the, uh, last year, I've had the opportunity to speak to a lot of the, uh, staff, uh, in Town Hall who interface, uh, with our, uh, Town Council. And including leaders from the RTM and individuals from Planning and Zoning, uh, Board of Finance. And, uh, I'm, uh, you know, I'm happy to say that there is, uh, is satisfaction uh, with the work with our, uh, current Town Council. And, uh, the sum and substance of those conversations, uh, makes me feel that the, uh, reappearance of our current council is, uh, is recommended. Uh, to be sure, there are things we like to, uh, discuss within our further retention. Uh, uh, with council relating to developing mechanisms and policies relating to billing practices, more specifically, what types of matters come under, uh, our retainer agreement and, uh, what matters might be billed, uh, discreetly or separately. And also with regard to, uh, a more formalized, uh, structure, uh, for reporting. So, uh, town, uh, first selectmen and, uh, our, uh, town leaders can, uh, be more well-informed as to events that me, might be, uh, coming down the, uh, road. We've had preliminary conversations, uh, with Town Council about, uh, some of those, uh, discreet, uh, changes. I don't anticipate those will be uh, difficult. There's certainly not reasons to, uh, hold up the, uh, overall decision to further, uh, retain them.
So are we, are we under a timeline and that's why we're um, reappointing before we have some of those answers? Is that what's, is that where we are?
Yes, well, yes, but the, the answers, uh, you know, related to some billing practices and, uh, policies I don't see as determinative of whether or not to recommend further retention. It's more of things to do that may, uh, make that, uh, process of, you know, going through our, uh, working relationship with Town Council more, uh, streamlined. Uh, but they're not reasons to hold up. I mean, we've had, John's had certainly, uh, conversations, uh, with, uh, Attorney Fox and his firm and, uh, and I've had, uh, some limited, uh, communications with them. And I don't have any reason to believe that there'll be any real issues with coming to an understanding about some, uh, discreet changes in, uh, some of the practices.
Yeah.
Right.
Go ahead.
I think I was just wondering, is there a timeline here? That's what I was trying to, um.
May I clarify that? So you'll recall that last year, the way this has worked in the past is we've had the Town Council on a two-year renewal cycle. And what happened last year is that that renewal came right after an election where you have a reconstituted Board of Selectmen. And it came up pretty fast for us to consider. So what we decided was to extend them for one year so that when we get to this point and we put them on a two-year renewal, it is not right around a Board of Selectmen election. So where we are on the timeline is that that one-year extension expired at the end of February. It's not saying that they can't uh, continue because their current contract just remains in force until we uh, can, uh, finalize a two-year extension. So we're not under any kind of an emergency to get this done. It's just that given the expiration of the one-year contract, uh, it was clear that we needed to pick this up and, and get to a, a resolution on a, on a two-year extension. Uh, to Mike's point, we've already had a dialogue with Town Council about, uh, clarifying this important point, which is what's covered by the retainer we pay to them and what's not. And what the question we posed to them is, let's talk about the things that are specifically not in the retainer. And so as a general matter, if there's specific litigation or a major case or something like that, as opposed to a mere consultation, say with any of us or with the RTM, uh, those would be the types of things that would be outside the retainer. But to Mike's point, what we need to do is just put that in writing towards a little more clear. The good news is that Town Council has already come back to us with suggestions as to what that wording would be. I think we need another couple iterations to get that right. And I've, not to put words in Mike's mouth, but I, I think what we do in the next meeting is to maybe have a draft agreement, which is an update of the one what we did last year with this sort of what's in the appendix, or what, what's in the retainer and what's not clarified for everyone's reaction. And if we all stack hands and that makes sense, I mean, before we bring it to this board, obviously Town Council will have been okay with it. And we'll have something to approve, hopefully at the next meeting, but I, I don't wanna dictate Mike's schedule on this. Mike, does that seem reasonable?
Yes.
Okay. So that, that's kind of where we are. Uh, further questions, comments?
Great plan.
Okay, all right. All right. So more to come on the Town Council. But again, Mike, I really appreciate your, and he has talked to a ton of people, by the way, so this, this will be great. Um, we've got some minutes to approve. So this is to review and approve the minutes of the special meeting we had on March fourth, which was for an executive session and then our regular meeting on March tenth. I didn't see anything on the March fourth, uh, on March tenth. Normally we have the attendance on these meetings. I didn't see that at the top. And then in my section on the first selectman's report, it's, he also reported that he filmed a new video and they asked the first selection series. There's actually, uh, several new videos that he filmed. So, um, that is, uh, that's the only amendments I had to the minutes. Any, any of you have any changes? Okay. Could I get a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting on March fourth and the regular meeting on March tenth as amended? Okay, Sarah moves. Mike seconds, all in favor? Okay, that's minutes. Um, agenda review. So flood updates still coming on that, uh, dog enforcement. We have talked about that. Uh, one thing that we've had on the review for a while that's not on there there is that, uh, is the consideration of a new town flag. So we completed another survey on that and I'll report more on that at our, uh, next meeting. So just, uh, a little patience on that. Um, is there anything else that anyone would like to add or comment on agenda review? Okay. All right. Our next meeting's, uh, Board of Selectmen will meet on Monday, April seventh. Uh, we've also got a Zoom meeting on Monday, April twenty-first, and then that's, uh, the following day. Tuesday, April twenty-second is our next quarterly, uh, joint department heads meeting. So that's what's coming up. If there's nothing else for the good of the order, may I get a motion to adjourn? Okay, Sarah moves. Uh, Marcy seconds, all in favor? We stand adjourned. Thank you, brains.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.